Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Wednesday, September 6, 2023. The clerk please take your role.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kils. Mrs. Kelsmith, Reverend Burgess Protem.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. If we all please rise, face the flag, recite the pledge of allegiance and remain for a moment, for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. The next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
To move.
Yes, second. All those in favor who sent the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. It is passed. The next order of business is proclamation. We have none to be presented. We have a few to be read. One, two, three, four, four to be read.
Councilman Kraus presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 2, 2023, to be Friends of Southside Park Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 9, 2023, to be Langley 100 Years Old Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Coghill and Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 8 through the 10th, 2023, to be Lebanese-American Days in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman, Councilman Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, August 15, 2023, to be Mary Paulus Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion to approve.
To move.
Aye.
All those in favor who sent the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. They are approved. That takes us, I believe, to public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of, pardon me, there's a will of council. I'm sorry, I'm going to skip over that. Yes, thank you very much. Will of council.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, be it further resolved, now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges the Council of Allegheny County to adopt legislation declining, declining to use county resources to assist in out-of-state criminal and civil investigations into matters of gender-affirming care.
Need a motion?
So, motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor who sent the vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. It is, so, the next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may before council. Profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Donald Ronald Lynn Miller. You're given three minutes. When the green light comes on, three minutes begun. When the light comes on, please relinquish the podium.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bellshoe River, and also New Delhi, India. Congratulations to the Indian people for their landing on the moon. No mention of it here. I think that's a big mistake. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. candidate for president, 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. We seek optimal information and intelligence to unify the city and county regardless of ideological trajectories or commitments using Hauser, Deutsch, Espanol, and Nihongo. Vote-by-vote verification for whom, uncensored free speech, and local government supremacy are key to what I do. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is labor, labor unions. Mr. Wilson's commitment to essential workers' rights proclamation is an example. Labor, i.e. work, 24/7, yes, like the Pittsburgh bureaus of police, fire, and EMS. What if the Pittsburgh police officers were unavailable for three weeks in August? Labor, no dough, work, 24/7, no, not Pittsburgh offices of council and mayor, staff excluded. Thank you very much for your work. Ms. Kelsmith, who still is absent for weeks at a time, and Mr. Ganey, available to us 24/7, it is laughable. They are unavailable to us for hours, for days, and weeks at a time. Labor, tarah bahu, work. Labor unions. Labor unions have a point of origin in the work of Karl Marx in Das Kapital in the mid-1860s. The key idea in Marx's work is that individuals who make and sell products for profit do not get a fair share of the profit. Labor, arbeit, work, arbeit macht frei, cynically. We have a competition ideologically between capitalism, which is anti-Marx, and communism, which is pro-Marx. But our people, over 60% of our people interviewed by Bloomberg and Gardner over the last two years, say that they are not paid fairly. In other words, they are not getting a fair share of the profit. That is the central idea in Marx's approach to economy. Our people are trapped. They feel trapped. They feel like slaves.
Thank you very much. Our next order, our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi, are you with us? Naomi, is she on? Naomi? Naomi, are you with us? All right, we'll come back to you then. Our next registered speaker is Chief Ikahana. Chief Ikahana, are you with us? Is she online? The next registered speaker is Chief Poma Ja Chakaman Yacal.
Greetings, and la cacke allocatee. The light in me honors the light in you. My title is Poma Ja Chakma Yacal, of the Air Qua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, and I'm the chief of medicine. I'm calling today to encourage City Council, for before you, you have legislation that our Confederacy has worked on with the Commission on Human Relations, and Jan Hemm, the former executive director of that commission. And over the past few years, we have worked diligently and, and with great diligence on this legislation to ensure the rights and the protections of the indigenous people in this area. Be respected. And we're encouraging all City Council members to read this legislation, for it was done over a period of time taking great consideration with the respects and the rights that are due to our people. And we work in tandem with the commission on this legislation. I'm encouraging you to read it carefully, to reach out if you have questions and you're unsure of what language is, or what this may mean, or that may mean, because we are here. We've extended our hand to you on multiple occasions. We've educated you and enlightened you on who we are as the indigenous people here in this area. We call it dearly to us the Delaware Territory. We know you refer to this particular part of that territory as Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And we understand and know the founding of the city, and the founding of Pennsylvania by William Penn. Founding of both of those, there was never to be interites. There was never to be any war made between our peoples and your people, citizens here on our land. And that's began to happen over and over through the patient tactics of the Colonization Society and the Negro Project and other things that were implemented to alienate us, to isolate us, to marginalize us, to erase us. And you have an opportunity, City Council, a great opportunity today, and moving forward, to work in tandem with us. And there are many of us, and we have independent nation-states as well, and they're to be honored and acknowledged and also respected and protected. And then we have, there are individual aborigines who walked the land here too as well that may not be connected. And this legislation is to protect all of us. And it's also to make sure that we work together well with the citizens that are here on our land. So I'm encouraging City Council to really dig, dig deep into the recesses of your minds and your hearts and your spirits and understand and attempt to realize the walk that your ancestors walked when they got here. And we assisted them in survival, and we assisted them in the wars that they fought for their freedom and their independence from Great Britain and all the other peoples after that. So please, do what is right, do what is honorable, do what is noble, be bold, and do something different. Not really different, because your ancestors did.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Chief Bianca. Is she online? Chief Bianca, are you with us? Our next registered speaker is Kate St. John. Miss St. John, are you with us?
I am here.
Hi, how you doing?
Fine.
God bless you. Start off with your name and neighborhood, and then your three minutes will begin.
My name is Kate St. John, and I live in North Oakland. I'm a birder and naturalist who has been blogging about nature in Pittsburgh for the last 15 years. I'm here today in support of the two deer ordinances, 2023, 1845, and 1846, because I know that the current deer population is unsustainable, and it will only get worse. Deer double their population every two to three years. If only 10 had been counted during the 2010 deer survey, that number grew to 160 last year and will be 320 next year or the year after. And 10 is much lower than the actual number counted 13 years ago. This situation is bad for the parks, neighborhoods, and public safety, and it is bad for the deer themselves. Our parks show the severity of deer overpopulation and the ensuing habitat degradation. There is a browse line in all the parks. Nothing grows from the ground to the height of a deer, because deer eat tree branches as well as leaves. There's severe damage and death of native plants and the deer's favorite foods. If you see green plants on the ground, those are the poisonous, alien, and distasteful plants that deer will not eat. Tree seedlings are browsed to the size of bonsai. And when the poultries we have now die, there will be no new trees. It's bad for deer in that the deer vehicle collisions are increasing as their population grows. And collisions will also increase right now through December, because they are already moving around in preparation for the breeding season called the rut. An individual deer can travel 30 miles a day during the rut, and they can swim. That's how they got here. There's less food in the parks, so they've moved into the neighborhoods and lost fear of humans, but they never lose their fear of dogs. Deer will attack off-leash dogs during the breeding season to defend their territory and their young. There's poor nutrition. They're so hungry that I've seen them browse poisonous plants in Shenley Park. And even worse for them, there's nowhere for them to hide now. They need shelter during breeding, and especially for their young fawns. But they have eaten all their shelter and have nowhere to hide. You can see straight through the forest and find them underneath the honeysuckle. Their population has outstripped safe places for deer, so please pass these bills so that we can begin to do deer management in the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Martha Eisler.
Thank you. My name is Martha Eisler. I'm at 5655 Darlington Road in Squirrel Hill. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in favor of passing the two ordinances that will allow us to have deer management in the City of Pittsburgh. You've heard from the Protect Our Parks Coalition, which was formed to preserve city parks, forests, gardens, and greenways from the negative impacts of deer, which Kate just outlined, so I won't go into that again. After much research and reading and discussions with experts over the last year, it's clear that the deer overpopulation problem is exponentially worse than it was in 2010, when we had our first deer study. It's clear that the only effective and cost-efficient deer management plan for parks and hence for cities includes hunting. We're all descendants of hunters. Hunters are respected and appreciated for what they do, not just for their own families, for locally sourced, high-protein food, but also because we have hunters sharing the harvest, which is the state's premier venison donation program supported by the Pennsylvania Game Commission. They process and distribute donated deer meat from hunters and municipal herd reduction sources to hungry people all over Pennsylvania. This pilot program and the subsequent deer management plan that will be submitted will begin the process of bringing the deer population back in balance with our habitat. We have our parks reducing their numbers. We'll also keep deer off our city streets as they look for new food sources. We're grateful that the mayor's office and City Council are taking the first step in approving this demonstration through a contract with USDA that will be the basis for the city to be able to submit a deer management plan in 2024. We hope that the solution to this dire situation we have before us will be solved, but we know that it won't be in one year. It will take years of refining a deer management plan to get to the balance that we need. But we congratulate you for starting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Gloria Roberts. Our next registered speaker is Gloria Roberts. Online? Gloria Roberts. Our next registered speaker is At Anta Takie Incha.
Greetings and good day. My title is Atansi Keencha. I present this small amount of information to you today not just to make known, but to give lawful and good cause for the City of Pittsburgh Council to accept the land acknowledgement, the Air Qua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I shine light upon the history of our ancestors, thus articulated in House Joint Resolution 3 given by Joanne Davis in 2007. We, the aborigines and natives of America, were given an apology by the United States government in light of the official depredation and ill-conceived policies implemented by the United States government, including to add that our ancestors inhabited the land of America since time immemorial. As outlined in Senate Congress Resolution 76, at the first landfall of immigrants and European races in America now so-called Turtle Island, your ancestors met in full-flower nations guided by democratic principles, under the authority of natural law, the ultimate law of the universe. Then and now acknowledged as the land of the free and home of the brave, these same democratic principles of our ancestors, from the great law of peace or refrain the United States Constitution today, to which you all have taken an oath to uphold. I reiterate this history to encourage the Pittsburgh City Council to begin to uphold support and protect and excluding Indians, not Tacs, as described in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution of the United States. Our ancestors, well, our actions are not for selfish gain. They are fueled to secure the blessings of liberty for our posterity. As Chakman Yahali, well, as Edith Poe Ma has stated, we have met numerous times to educate and to reiterate the importance of this land acknowledgement, and to begin to treat our people as what is lawfully due. This is, once again, this is not for selfish gain. This is to show and guide our posterity and ways of our ancestors, so that they can steward the land whenever we are gone, and so that we can begin to work in harmony and unison, and to show our children a better way of moving forward into the future.
Thank you very much. So let's go back to those who are called, that were not here. Naomi Mullen? Naomi?
And la cacke allocatee. The light in me honors the light.
Here.
So which one, which one of you?
Can anyone hear me there?
Who is that? Who's, who's speaking?
I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s till 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals, and bonair. This is for you, Michael. Here's the situation. An excellent school was closed. The building has become a threat and detrimental harm. It should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. It must be torn down. Parks and trees, Pittsburgh funds, used to make it a green space. The residents of Bonair care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for a continued detrimental property? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? We, the people of Bonair, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space, not a building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bonair Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bonair community. Without that, there is no valid governance. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining, decaying our community that we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed that the Bonair Elementary School building should remain. We, the people of Bonair, have driven past former school buildings and heard the story of human feces and hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except as a green space. This was read at my husband's funeral, written by Italian chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched his life with many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable to Frank. He worked tirelessly but always energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, friend, employee, and neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life, as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bonair community. Shady trees, not shady deals, and bonair. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Ikahana. Heard you earlier. Or Chief Bianca, maybe?
Okay, I was unmuted. I don't know if this is intentional, and I wasn't heard the first time.
We hear you now.
If so, I will, if it's intentional for me to speak, I will.
Yes, it's, it's time for you to speak.
If it was a mistake, oh, you.
It's your turn to s-
Thank you. And la cacke allocatee. The light in me honors the light in you. My title is Poma Ja Chakma Yacal, and I'm a grand Air Qua Confederacy, also the chief of medicine.
Same person?
For the Confederacy. And for indigenous people as a whole throughout the Americas.
Excuse me, have you spoke before?
I wear many hats in this community.
Huh? All right, thank you very much. And I think that's exhaust. Is there, all right, so now that exhaust, our registered speakers, I hear you. Now it's time for those in the audience to please come forth.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. My name is Rick Noran. I'm from Brookline. I'm just a regular Pittsburgh guy, retired, well up into my 60s. And I want to talk a little bit about Pittsburgh history today, past, present, and our future. And I'm talking about it because I think there is a very desperate need to give the downtown a shot in the arm. And what I mean by that is what people have done in the past. We can look back to people like David L. Lawrence, Mayor Dick Caliguri, and Mayor Tom Murphy, and easily recognize the accomplishments of these men. They all seem to have the same type of qualities that others haven't had, and we desperately needed them at the time to lead our region and our city. Those qualities were vision, courage, and determination. Every step of the way with their projects, starting with David L. Lawrence and Renaissance 1, Mayor Caliguri Renaissance 2, and Tom Murphy with the North Shore Development, had to overcome enormous obstacles to create important things. I bring this up because I am bringing up an old idea. It has been around forever and something that I think is desperately needed. And the conversation, the conversation needs to start down here on Grant Street, and that is to get a rapid transit system from the airport to downtown in order to cut time and convenience. If you go to, if you travel around, I mentioned this last week, to other regions in the country, you will see what works and doesn't work as far as injecting business into our city. And normally, you see very successful cities have a very good rapid transit system. Time and convenience is everything in air travel. That's why I'm calling for it. I will continue to call for it. And I just want to touch again about David L. Lawrence. He didn't do it alone. He had Richard Mellon help him and other people. And same thing with Dick Caliguri and Tom Murphy. Now let's go back to Tom Murphy, because that's recent history. We had a referendum on the RAD tax, I believe it is, and it was shot down. But Tom Murphy went to the state, and he made it happen. Now you can look in hindsight, 2020 hindsight, and see the results. The Pirates were definitely talking about leaving town. The Steelers were definitely talking about leaving town, okay? Can you imagine if they left town 25 years ago? Now, you will have, like I said, oppositions, critics, and naysayers. But from an economic standpoint, from an economic standpoint in our region, it's obvious. Okay, thank you for your time. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Yes, please come.
Devin McLean, Pittsburgh Hill District, last gentleman mentioned. Courage, 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 courage. Okay, courage. Look it up. Carl Jamar Myers Jr., named after his dad, was gunned down at the T Station over there in, in Beachview a couple weeks ago. I can almost call the day he was conceived, because I told him, don't get that girl pregnant. Carl, don't get Tashika pregnant, right? Carl, don't get Tashika pregnant, right? Because Tashika grew up to be a, uh, mother who thought her son was also supposed to operate as a husband. She was stealing his money so he can't get an apartment for himself because it's a housing crisis, especially for young black men. And I think about how easily that could have been me at 21 years old, living here, struggling, and can't nobody even rent to you, even if it's subsidized because they don't give that housing to young black men who are single and want to work. But, because, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a threat. You, you want me to call the police? You'll go to jail. You'll go to jail. You want to go to jail? Well, get out. Ma, I just gave you all my money. There's nowhere for me to go. What do you expect? But a young man like that, you tell not to have a gun to protect himself. At least he was able to shoot back. But he's dead now. Thanks. You know? Taught that boy how to almost walk. Housing, 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 you know? What you want us to do? About this union thing, man, I was working security, work security, man. I was working on them UPMC lots. Dude, the administrator down there didn't tell me it was a union site. I said, man, I've been trying to get on this site for thirty-three months already. How come you ain't telling me it was a union site? Christopher Smith tells me what business of yours is it or whether it's a union site or not? Dude, I'm on my way down there. There's no police I can call for that. And why would the police even back me up for that? You know, I, what? A gay black police chief? Is that on purpose?
Any other speakers?
Hi, um, my name is Allison Keating. I live in Manchester and I'm a representative of the Friends of Riverview Park. And, um, uh, I really can't reiterate this enough. I am extremely proud of everyone in this room and lots of people who aren't. Um, some communities tear themselves apart over this issue, pretending that we're unsure of the right actions and trying to address limitless, unfounded concerns, you know, but what about-isms. Um, the game commission is the expert here. Uh, they don't allow alternatives to a public bow hunt. Birth control and neutering are not legal in Pennsylvania. The only legal option after a public bow hunt is a professional cull, which can reduce the deer population faster, but that option isn't on the table here and now. Um, I personally have a background in public safety and I also do advocacy around equitable mobility. I can personally attest that damaged deer due to cars, the costs are very high. The experience can be traumatizing for both drivers and deer. Um, I can also personally attest to the fact that crashes can have cascading effects for lower and middle income households, even going so far as leading to job loss in some cases. Um, and a, as a cyclist, I'm acutely aware of the threats to me as I've certainly come closer to deer, come much closer to deer than I would prefer several times. Um, the safety of this program is a concern that I've heard from attending meetings all, even meetings and events all over the city. Um, archery deer hunting is extremely safe. Um, when there are injuries, it's the hunter or a companion. Further, implementing a controlled program allows us to restrict our parks to only hunters who have been vetted and tested. I've personally seen hunters go into Riverview Park and I've heard similar reports from many other parks. Making public hunting transparent and controlled through this program will increase public confidence in park safety, full stop. Piloting this program opens us up to all kinds of potential opportunities. Uh, one that we've heard multiple times is a hunting mentorship program, which would be in partnership with the game commission. This, along with the newish park, park camping program, means that future generations of Pittsburghers will have opportunities that past generations did not. So again, I, I cannot express how thankful I am for everyone in this room doing what you're doing right now and for finally getting this done. Sincerely, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Gary Fuejak. I am a retired wildlife conservation officer for the Pennsylvania Game Commission. And I served in that capacity in Allegheny County in the city of Pittsburgh from the year 2000 to 2015. I'd like to offer my services as a knowledgeable resource uh, when it comes to the amending of, of city ordinances eighteen, when the proposed changes for 1845 and 1846. I'd like to share with the, the city council that, uh, public hunting has an approval rating, approval, uh, rating of over 80% in Pennsylvania. And, uh, those numbers are, are quite impressive. So the public supports lawful and regulated hunting programs and hunting in Pennsylvania. Also, this, the city wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. There's been a controlled archery hunt in all nine of the county parks for decades, in some parks for decades. It has a very safe track record and it's done a wonderful job of helping to reduce deer populations in the county of Allegheny. And like the lady that spoke before me, hunting-related shooting incidences, or what they call hunting accidents, over the last 24, over the last 24 years, there's, we've averaged 1.3 per year across the state. So a little over one hunter every year hurts himself always out there archery deer hunting. And that's what happens in most of those cases. Twenty-four of those 30 incidences were when the hunter actually sustained a self-inflicted injury. The other six incidences were when the hunter took a hunting companion and that person was injured or, and, uh, and the other incidences, it was, uh, just the hunting companion that was not hunting at all with that hunter and they sustained an injury. So the data shows that the public, the public's threat to hunters in the city parks would be negligible. And the, this deer issue, the, the deer concerns, and I'm glad the city of Pittsburgh is taking this up, the mayor's office and the council are looking at this, because the deer problems have been in the news media since at least 2005 and during all my years as, uh, an officer here in Allegheny County. And, um, I thank you for your time and I, I wish you the best. And I, I, I hope, uh, an informed, intelligent, and right decision is made for deer management in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speakers, we will now turn to our presentation of papers. All right. Starting with Councilman Cockhill for me, Councilman Burgess.
No new papers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, takes me to, uh, Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. Chair.
Takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Mr. Protam?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1872. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Allegheny League of Municipalities in the amount of $9,000 for annual dues for direct membership.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental, um, and Educational Affairs. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing this, I didn't have a sheet in front of me. Okay, so Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Public. I, I got you.
I didn't take my own, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1873. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Adler &amp; Sons, Inc. in the amount of $8,900 for tree removal work at Dodd's in Potomac Avenue. Bill 1874. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Maple Avenue Bridge project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $450,000, an increase of $170,000 from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1875. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Corley Street Bridge project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $790,000, an increase of $538,000 from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1876. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, utility, right-of-way, and construction phases of the Swinburne Street Bridge project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $14,909,000, an increase of $12,559,000 from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 95%, and a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $16,250, a $12,250 increase from a previously executed agreement. Bill 1877. Resolution providing for a contribution agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the SR4003 East Street and Evergreen Road Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $31,500. Bill 1878. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Lormer Avenue Bridge project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,600,000, an increase of $800,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at no additional cost to the city from the previously authorized $1,500. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1879. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the multiple phases of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $7,505,556, an increase of $100,000 for the right-of-way phase from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost to, at a cost to the city at $5,500, an increase of $1,000 from the previously executed agreement. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 1880. Resolution providing for a supplemental agreement or agreements with Zatola Construction for construction services associated with the Allegheny Circle Phase 2 construction project, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $2,890,945.46, an increase of $252,945.46 from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution 670 of 2020. Bill 1881. Resolution providing for a contribution agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the SR60 Thornburg Bridge Project, providing for payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $24,700. Bill 1882. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with the use of existing agreements for the professional construction management services for home or park infrastructure upgrades between the City of Pittsburgh and Cosmo's Technologies. The total not to exceed cost is $288,133.28. And Bill Number 1883. Resolution amending Resolution Number 386 effective June 19, 2019 as amended by Resolution Number 70 effective February 18, 2020, entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements for the use of existing agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Pachec plus MTR for the professional landscape architectural services for South Side Park Phase 1 design at a cost not to exceed $400,000 by increasing the total allocation by the amount of $61,220 for a new total of $461,220."
Thank you very much. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1884. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Hoff McKean and Snissack LLP in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for a period of one year for professional legal services related to the Public Utility Commission. Bill Number 1885. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $5,857.01 over one year in favor of Ronald J. Jordan in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his motorized wheelchair due to a malfunctioning handicap door in the city-county building. Bill 1886. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $3,992.26 over one year in favor of Ralph Howman and Jean Zeeler in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to their stopped vehicle from a city EMS vehicle backing into it. Bill 1887. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $3,156.41 over one year in favor of Robert Ireland in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to this park vehicle from a city environmental services vehicle. Bill 1888. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $13,148 over one year in favor of Lorraine E. Maisick in full and final settlement of a claim for destruction of a residential sewer lateral dual due to encroachment of tree roots from a city-owned right-of-way tree. Bill 1889. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $7,500 over one year in favor of Sharon Copy, executor tricks of the estate of Stephen Copy in full and final settlement of a litigation file in the US District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1890. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of a single payment in 2023 to Linda Lasik and Thomas J. Lasik and their attorney, G. Christopher F. Pesos, in an amount not to exceed $55,000 in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1891. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021 effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund by $49,052, Increasing Swinburne Bridge by $157,548, Increasing Lormer Bridge by $800,000, Increasing Maple Avenue Bridge by $1,000, $170,000, and Increasing Corley Street Bridge by $538,000." And Bill Number 1892. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017 effective December 28, 2017, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing McFerron Street Second Avenue Bridge by $9,719.73, Increasing Bridge Repairs by $9,361.10, and Increasing Liberty Avenue by $90,358.63."
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you.
That's a lot. Lot of words.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1899. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV Public Places and Property, Article 11, Parks and Playgrounds by adding a new chapter 481, Use Regulations Providing Guidance for Development in Parks and Greenways.
Uh, thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1893, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with HR&amp;A, avails for the purpose of assisting in the development of a strategic plan for the Department of City Planning, cost not to exceed $109,000 over one year. Bill 1894, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in an Amount of $20,000 with a local match of $50,000 for total project cost not to exceed $70,000 to support planning efforts to create historic guidelines for three previously designated historic districts: Roslin Place, Shinley Farms, and the Mexican War Streets Expansion. And Bill Number 1895, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Michael Baker International in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000 to complete an architectural survey of the Crawford Roberts Neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Now, that brings us to Councilwoman Kell Smith, who is the Chair of Hearings and Policy. We have first one forming appointment.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1896, Resolution Informing Appointment of Sabina Dietrich as a Member of the Steel Valley Authority Board with a Term to Expire August 1, 2028.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now, we have two...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe our motion for informing is read, received, filed. Am I wrong, Madam Clerk?
No, you're correct.
I was just going by, it was recommended on our sheet that I assumed was also looked at by our solicitor, but I will change that into a motion to re...I thought that too, but I followed my script. I will, I'll take a motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now, we have two appointments.
Bill 1897, Resolution Appointing Gregory Kotler as a Member of the Citizen Police Review Board with a Term to Expire October 31, 2027. And Bill Number 1898, Resolution Appointing Terry Shields as a Member of the Citizens Police Review Board with a Term to Expire October 31, 2027.
Is there a desire to interview?
Yes, Mr. Chair. May I offer a motion to interview, please?
Second.
All those in...there's a motion to hold for interview. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, we will then hold for interview. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? The next order of business is report for committee for final action, starting with Councilman Anthony Cockhill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill Number 1868, Report to Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for August 30 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1827, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Bear Solutions, LLC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $8,400 for an Advanced Train-to-Trainer Firearms Instruction Course. Bill 1845, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article 11, Parks and Playgrounds, Chapter 473, Use Regulations, Section 473.01, Park Property, and Title VI, Conduct, Article 11, Weapons, Chapter 695, General Weapons Provision, Section 695.04, Use of Weapons by Discharge by Adding Exceptions to Allow for the Implementation of a Deer Management Program. And Bill Number 1846, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the United States Department of Agriculture for Services Relating to a Cooperative Wildlife Damage Management Program for Whitetail Deer for a Sum Not to Exceed $10,251.07.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there a discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor that passes the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Madam Clerk, I will vote yes on 1827. I'll register no votes, please, on 1845 and 1846 for the reasons I stated at last Wednesday's standing committee meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes on Bill 1827 and two noes on Bill 1845 and 1846.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to my committee, Committee on Human Resources. Mr. Cockhill for me, please.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1869, Report to Committee on Human Resources for August 30 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1826, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Outwit Studios, LLC, at a Cost Not to Exceed $49,900 to Conduct Housing Discrimination Research and Develop Recommendations.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor that passes the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1870, Report to Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for August 30 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2022-0661, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Woodring Court, in the 23rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, as Per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 1809, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Chappelle Hill Road, in the 14th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, as Per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in July 2023. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill 1836, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, Effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Tau Beta Ada Fraternity, Inc. as a Grant Recipient and Increasing Hope for Tomorrow by $3,250, and Authorize Subsequent Agreements." And Bill Number 1837, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, Effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Sheridan United Methodist Church as a Grant Recipient and Increasing Hope for Tomorrow by $5,500, and Authorize Subsequent Agreements."
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor that passes the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Protem.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1871, Report to Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for August 30 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1553, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 3239th Street. Bill Number 1554, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 166 Banner Way, 9th Ward.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor that passes the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is finally passed. I will go to our announcements first, then back to motions and resolutions. Meeting announcements, due to the Labor Day holiday, council standing committees meeting is scheduled for 1:30 p.m. this afternoon. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 12 noon today, when speaker registration closes. Tomorrow, Thursday, September 7, at 1:30, council will host a cablecast public hearing discussion on Bill 2023, 1393, as it relates to zoning, Homewood Get-Go. I will chair that meeting. Anything from members?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure, of course. Mr. Kraus, former president.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give a brief explanation as to why I was working remotely today. I am headed up to a very small luncheon at a constituent's house in Allentown, who, over the years, has largely been perceived to be the mayor of Allentown. Her name is Helen Bayney, and today is her birthday, and Helen is turning 99 today. And so, like I said, I'm on my way up there for a small luncheon with her. Just wanted to wish her a very, very happy 99th birthday, and for that reason, I will not be attending this afternoon's standing committee meeting, because this is just such a milestone, and I wouldn't miss it for the world. So, again, for Helen and all she's been and all she's done through the years, a very happy 99th birthday. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from members? One day, I do aspire to become the mayor and the head of my own household. But, one day, after 39 years of marriage, I have not made it yet, so I don't have great expectations of it happening anytime soon. All right. Anything else from members? If not, I'll accept a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.